I now call to order the budget work session of the Board of Commissioners of City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lund.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Eisner.
Out of breath, but here.
Commissioner Kuyas.
Here.
Okay, tonight, this is a more or less a preliminary work session on the budget that we added on to it before we get into the crux of everything, beginning July 18th. The city managers put the agenda together, brought some of the department heads in here to present some information. And Mr. Lacourse, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Well, this is a first. This is the first time we've done a pre-budget workshop session. We got a new board and a new way of doing things, so let me let you know a little bit what I'm trying to do with these three items tonight. The conventional thing is the first part, which is a very condensed presentation of the proposed budget overview that Mr. Herring will give. It's very condensed. I sent you a lot of the things that's been going on and a lot of the presentations that have been made to the Budget Advisory Committee. That is just for information as we go through this process. So, we will do that first. Kind of the whole goal of tonight and bringing you here before we get into the budget session is to deal with the big-ticket issues first, to get you thinking about those big-ticket issues because this board, for this year and the next couple of years, will have the chance to allocate a lot of money towards projects, some which are new and some which has been waiting a long time to be allocated to. When we get to item two, I put together at the end of the packet that you have for tonight, and the packet for tonight does have some new information that I didn't send to you Sunday. We worked on that information today to get to you. And again, it's all discussion. There's no decisions, no definite decisions on the budget you're going to make tonight. It's just to let you know the big picture, everything we've got out there and what we need to do over July and August before we get to the public hearings on the budget in September. So, we'll go over that. Again, there's a worksheet at the end that tells you all the areas for this year and for some upcoming budgets of the money that we have available for this board to designate to the priorities that they've seen, not only in the community, engagement we've done, some of the progress we've made in their strategic plan and what we're looking at in there. And of course, it's got to start somewhere, so this budget is where you're going to start. What's the most important to slot into the money for this first year? And then you'll be looking at the upcoming years and where some of the other important items that you see on these lists need to be programmed in so we can prepare for not only this year, but the next two or three years after that with the process we've done. And then the last item is just to talk about the future budget work sessions. Every commission likes to do the work sessions a different way. So, we want to talk about how we want to do those two sessions, the procedures, and just a little bit so we're prepared for how to do the 19th and the 28th. So, we'll start out with the conventional portion of the meeting. I'll have Ron do the proposed budget outline an overview that he's given you, that we've given you here tonight.
Mr. Lacourse.
Yes.
Mr. Herring, before you start, I want to make sure, does any commissioner have any questions for Mr. Lacourse about tonight? There's not going to be any decisions that are going to be made, but if you've got any questions concerning what his expectations are for you tonight, please ask those now.
I discussed it with him at the picnic yesterday, so I have an
Go ahead.
understanding of what we're going to be talking about and focusing on during this preliminary budget.
So, we're okay to proceed? Everybody else okay? All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director, and congratulations. That's the first budget workshop for the new year for you all. And like the city manager said, I'm just trying to go over some of the major revenue and expenditure assumptions within the budget, but then trying to get into the major funds that have some of the capital items that we need to have some decisions on. And just an overview, the budget process started in March with all the departments keying in their budget. Then in April, Finance did the payroll calculation and revenue projections. Funds were balanced. General Fund was balanced with no use of unassigned reserves. And then May and June, the Budget Advisory Committee met with the departments. They've spent three days going with all the, through all the departments with their budgets with them. So, they spent a lot of time with them. Some of the revenues, assumptions of the major revenues, basically projecting them based on historicals, the current year-to-date and any other economic factors. Property taxes, taxable value increase of 12% per county estimate and the millage rate remaining at 5.37 is in the budget. Since then, on July 1st, we got the certified values and the increase is 14% now in the taxable values. And I got to say, I love the high number. You know, usually we're in 6% to 7%, but I sort of worry when something's that high and there's recession talk out there. And the last time we had numbers this high was in 2008. 2009 was the start of the recession and we had five years of property taxes going down for five years. So, I hope it stays, but I just, sometimes I, well, maybe it's me, I'm in Finance and we worry a lot and stuff. Water and sewer fees, of course, no increase per the ordinance. Sanitation fees projected on the new contract. An estimated CPI increase, but cannot go over 3% based on the contract. And stormwater fees increases 50 cent per ESU. Expenditure assumptions, police and fire union increases per their contract. The rest of the general employees, we've funded at 5% increase. There are no new positions at the budget at this time. Health insurance increase is estimated at 5%. Property liability insurance increase at 10% and workers' comp insurance increase estimated at 10%. We haven't gotten those final numbers yet. Usually, we get them in August. Summary information for the General Fund, the General Fund budget is $30,774,000. Property taxes within there, the revenues is 12.2 million. That's 40% of the General Fund revenues and the millage rate at 5.37. And we did not use any unassigned reserves. And revenues over expenditures be allocated, this is money available to be allocated, $482,000, but this was based on the 12% taxable values. So, that number has now gone up to $638,000. That's available, that bottom number there. Just to go over the American Rescue Plan a little bit. You know, we're receiving the 12.8 million. We got 6.4 million last September. We're supposed to get the remaining 6.4 million in September of 2022. We're required to do quarterly reporting since we got over 10 million. We did our first quarter back at the end of March 31st. Projects approved so far are South Spring tidal flooding, 94,000. The roof chiller at the Public Safety Building, 900,000. Mental health crisis intervention, intervention for public safety employees, 48,000. Bay Shore septic to sewer, 1 million. Citywide advertising marketing, 100,000. Those add up to the 2.1 million. The number below it, the 2.5, is taken into account for the asterisk next to the roof chiller, Public Safety Building. So far, we're thinking it might be coming in about $360,000 more. Just some important information on the American Rescue Plan. All the funds have to be obligated in like in the form of a purchase order contract by December 31st, 2024. That's two and a half years from now. And all the funds have to be expended, cash out the door, all gone by December 31st, 2026. And interest earnings per ARPA we can use for any city purpose. Hopefully, I'm not sure if you can hopefully read this, but this is the ARPA fund and it's showing the revenues up top. Trying to show the current year, oops, sorry, wrong button. The current year 2022 with the revenues here up to 12.8 million and then these expenditures we just mentioned. And then highlighted down here in yellow is what's remaining, the 10.7 million. If you take out that 360,000 I just mentioned for the roof chiller, Public Safety Building, it brings maybe about 10.3 million available to allocate for the ARPA money. I know there's a lot on here, but this is the Penny Fund. And these are all the projects that are budgeted within the Penny Fund for this current year. This is 2023 and we usually have our standard annual ones here for the police, fire and brick streets. But it leaves about 2.5 million left in the Penny Fund. We like to keep about 200,000 in there, so we're saying maybe we got 2.3 million available for expenditure in the Penny Fund. The CRA, you know, just a little information, you probably already know this, but you know, it was created in 2001. Expires after 30 years, the area of it from alternate 19, from mirrors to the sponge docks. The base year taxable value was 41 million. And any taxable values over the base year go into the CRA. And I just thought I'd show you like the CRA. The CRA value for that area now is 119 million, so it's gone up 78 million or 190% in that CRA area. And this is a CRA, again, showing the current year projects that are out there. And then here's 2023 with the revenues, expenditures. Going down here within highlighted in yellow, there's 537,000 remaining to be allocated. We like to keep about 100,000 in there, so we got about 437,000 that can be allocated. And one last slide, just going over the timeline for the budget process. You know, we got the certified values Friday. Tonight, we're meeting. Trying to get another proposed budget book to you all by July 11th, before the next meeting. Their first, I guess, the first official budget workshop on July 19th. The City Commission on Tuesday, the 26th establishes the maximum millage rate. It's required per state requirements that the maximum millage rate be established, so that will be coming before the board. The second budget workshop is planned for July 28th. Still to be determined if there's a third budget workshop. And then we get into the public hearings on Tuesday, September 6th. And then Wednesday, Sep. 21st, 21st. And then the budget's done and we go, October 1st is the start of the new fiscal year. With that.
Okay, I want to just ask, you okay with that? Okay, I'm going to ask the Commissioner if he'd like to make comments now. Questioner Lund.
I'm sorry, I'm running through notes. I really don't have any questions at this time.
No, our comments are, that's fine. Commissioner, you're done. Questioner Lund, you don't have anything? You don't have anything?
No, nothing at all.
Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Ron, you mentioned a couple of times that you like to keep $250,000 in the Penny Fund and $100,000 in the CRA Fund. That doesn't mean that we can't allocate those funds, right? That's just another reserve on top of the 8 million that we already have in reserves?
Yeah, if you're so choose, I mean, it's, there's no fund balance, our minimum, so yes, I mean, it could be allocated if you need to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'd just like to keep a little cushion.
I understand. Plus $8 million. That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned about the 14% on the first page as a gratuity type. You feel good about it. What makes you feel good about it and what is one of the fears or any fear that we could face?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch, which page were you talking about?
This, there's no page numbers here. It's just the first, third page. You called it 14% right here, Ron.
The revenue increase.
So, with the 14, the taxable value increase of 14%?
Well, with the 14%, of course, we're going to be getting two more percent than you.
Correct.
So, what do you do with that money? Do you put that aside? Do you feel better to spend it on something that we need right now? What is the recommendation from you?
Well, currently, that we have that in a reserve for funding. I know some of the thoughts are you could put it back into unassigned fund balance and just, okay, let's build up the unassigned fund balance from 8.8 million to, you know, 9.4 million. So, that's one choice. I guess the other is, it's going to depend on the board of positions or whatever else might be requested within the General Fund. This is just the General Fund.
Right. I know we would make the decision, but what kind of recommendation from your gut is what I'm asking?
What I see a lot of time is, you know, during COVID and stuff, we had a lot of operating expenses that, you know, we cut back on operating. I would like to see some more money go into operating. I'd like to also have a maintenance reserve, so we have money in case, I don't know, I can't tell you how many times somebody comes up to my office and needs a new air conditioner and stuff. I won't mention, you know, just, okay, I need 50,000.
Pointing fingers, but I got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Either that or they sweat.
My other question on pay increases, don't we normally do a 3% pay increase?
Correct.
So, is this a recommendation of 5% or this, I'm trying to figure out where the 5 came from?
I think what we've put in there, we've looked at all the other communities in the area and a lot of them are doing between, without averaging 5%, some are doing 6%. So, we thought, you know, we don't want to be losing, you know, personnel and stuff like that. Let's, let's put 5% in there instead of 3%.
I agree. I just was curious what your take on that was.
Yes.
Let me just see, because I had one more question. On the American Rescue Plan, have we looked into at all speaking to people who really got financially strapped by the COVID events? Lost jobs or their income changed drastically, lost a business? You know, I keep seeing, and I've spoken about this on a number of occasions, it's easy to spend $12 million. I know, I looked at the wish list. The wish list is $40 million, what we'd like to have. How do we get that money to the people that really are destitute?
I guess that would determine on trying to go out to the community. I don't know if you would have somebody like your economic development person and going out to try to figure, what do you have to figure out? How do you want to be distributing this money to the community in what fashion? You know, if it's to help out with utility bills or what other item there might be. I think you have to set some sort of guidelines on it and what you want to use it for and how you want to disseminate it.
Well, could we set aside an X amount of dollars as a commission to put that aside to be distributed later down the road? I mean, not far down the road, I understand, but I mean, what I'd like to see is people that are really hurting in town get something that, we're not just distributing to infrastructure and we, you know, we'll take care of the sewer. You know, we'll deal with the hospital. I mean, everybody's got a, you know, when you have $12 million, everybody has their hand out and everybody deserves it. But I want to speak for the people that are not able to come here and speak for themselves.
Is part of the American Rescue Plan to be able to do what you're saying, to be able to help people? I guess it just depend on how you want to go about doing that and how you're going to want to be going to allocate that money to those people.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner. Let me go to Commissioner Kuyas next.
I just wanted, I was happy that Commissioner Eisner asked a question about the pay increase for the general employees. I think we need to be competitive with all the nearby cities and that was the only question I had and it was answered right now. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I had a couple of other clarifying aspects. So, Mark, we, in the past board, we talked about P and C insurance and workers' comp insurance going out to bid. Is there any plan for that? I think Jane at the time said it was a good idea and you all talked about doing that.
Your consultants are working on that right now.
So, that's, is that going to be for fiscal year '23 or fiscal year '24?
I believe.
She's trying it for '23.
Yeah.
Okay, for '23, okay.
Yeah.
So, we don't know where that's going to come back, so that would be interesting to see where that lands. And then also, I know, Ron, you're very conservative with everything that you do. And you're talking about how it's, we're having more revenue increase, but I could tell you from a standpoint, just like we're giving the employees an increase in their wages, 5% on average. The homeowners also are paying more in tax dollars, so we have to be conscious about the millage rate and where that's at also. I know Mark sent out an email with the link to an article that was written in Tampa Bay Times. I understand costs are going up, but as public servants, we need to be cautious and aware of our values are going up and our millage rate should be going down also. I'm not saying a drastic millage rate change, but it's something that we really should be looking at as a whole picture. And then when you get into the general funds, we'll have more discussions about positions, but I do believe that we need to look at our fire and police with the increase in amount of residents in our city too, over the years. So, thank you.
First, I want to thank all of our advisory boards and community groups that have submitted their thoughts and observations and recommendations. They're always helpful here and we've got several memoranda in the back with that information and that's for the commission's consideration. And feel free to ask the city manager any questions that you have on those. I think this year, obviously, the budget's going to be very much a balance as it has been in previous years. For me personally, I'm going to approach this from a policy perspective. To give you one example, we've got a request for some funding from a community group for creating some kind of design guidelines for the Greektown Historic District, which I think need to be done, but then when you ask the planning director about it, basically, they haven't even been adopted as a local district yet. So, I think the more appropriate question in that regard is what do we do? What do we need in order to adopt them as a historic district? Do we create these design guidelines and what else would be needed in that process? I want to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is with the money that we do spend in this and you'll see several of those things in the budget. Secondly, personnel cost. If, you will be talking, I would encourage you to do so to the unions at some point in the future to get a sense, and also our two, our police chief and fire chief, to get a sense of what others are having to experience with increases in public safety pay and also what we're beginning to see in other surrounding communities with regard to pay. Everything that you see, that you experience in a grocery store with increased prices gets pushed back to those employees as well. They experience them as well. So, I think that the job market, we're just on the verge of it becoming very competitive and I would like for us to kind of stay ahead of the curve so we don't wind up getting into an extremist situation where some of our employees have gone to better pay and we could have done something about it ahead of time. So, I think there'll be more communication on that and maybe some targeted salary surveys in our area to see what we need to do in that regard. For the most part, last year, we, the commission almost chose to go line by line in the budget. If that's what this commission wants to do, that's fine. But for me, I tend to go down and look at the trends of what the increases are and what the decreases are for each department. And if it's consistent, then I've got my trust in the departments of managing their own and of course, they do a good job. They've kept us out of trouble so far. It seems that all the decisions that get us into trouble are ones made by the commission. At least that's been my experience in the past. So, any case, we'll see how that goes going forward, but I really don't. The other thing I want to point out too, Ron Herring counts money. It's plus, minus. He doesn't ask why is this happening or why is that, unless something isn't adding up and he really doesn't get into the policy end of it with regard to some of the departments and things like that. Those questions are more appropriate for the department. He can tell you as far as revenues and maybe things that we aren't going to be seeing this year from a budgeting, from dollars and coming from the state in terms of taxes and things like that. But for example, the allocation of money, the ARPA money for distributing would be something that I think that we would have to have somebody else work on that other than.
Right.
Yeah, and so that's all. I see that happen on occasion with Ron and you're, Ron's always really wanting to answer the question, but sometimes it might be better to have somebody else answer that too at a better time. That's all I have. Thank you. Is there anybody else for the follow-up? Anything else? Okay. See you, Major.
For item two, capital projects, and I've got three divisions, ARPA, Penny and CRA. We're going to kind of do them all together. I think, I think where to start, the packet that you had left out, go to the end where it has a funds worksheet. And again, that's for you. You may throw it away, leader. You may computerize, you may do some. This is my cheat sheet that I'm going to be using during the budget process. I wanted to share it with you because it's important. If you look at the first page, this, the first page is this year's budget. This year's general fund budget, Penny and CRA of the amount of money we do not have expended yet. So, this is the money that this board is going to allocate, what to do within the budget. General Fund, you heard from his presentation. General fund, you, you heard from his presentation, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand eleven. Penny for Pinellas right now, unobligated, two million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand and change. CRA, four hundred and thirty-seven. That's what, when you're looking at these projects, when you're looking at what we're going to do, what capital projects to go forward with, you're going to be slotting these along with the, the ARPA monies, which you'll see coming up later. But that's, that's your budget right now and the money you got.
Hey, Mark, can you, you said capital projects. Can you just put it out for everybody what a capital project is? The difference between capital and non-operating?
Those are, those are the major projects. You're going to see the major water, the major buildings, the whole list. What we'll be going over, when you, when you see the things we're going on the other list, those are going to be those type of, of projects that are, that are in there. Obviously, there may be some other things that are slotted in, some things, some wishes of commissioner that may come up in the other things, but those are the, those are the main things you're going to see, capital expenditures. When you look at the second page, that shows you the outlook. Again, this commission is going to be involved in setting the course for the next three years. So what you see on the second page is, when you set the basis, you're going to set the start of the processes with this year's budget. Of what are the priorities, what do we need to do first? But there's also a lot of, a lot of projects that are very important that you're not going to be able to slot in the first year. Here is the money you got that second and third year. If you want to decide, if you want to split a big project up in over several years. This is the estimated money you're going to have for Penny in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four and two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, and for CRA for both those two years. Again, unallocated money that you will have discretion over of the items that come after what you budget for the first year. And of course, the last page is just, that's where you have the ARPA funding and obviously, the projects you slot in there, you're not going to have to slot them into one of these places. So, this is kind of a three-year worksheet as we go through the different things. This is where, you know, I'm going to be placing in the projects at this board, in our budget process, in the next two meetings. For instance, just to give an example, I think under ARPA, I think the federal government kind of dictated with giving it with Congressman Bill O'Rourke is giving us two million. It kind of obligates us to find the other three point three million for the Craig Park project. Now again, remember, we asked for four million from the federal government. We got two. Obviously, they're ready to allocate, we're ready to start the design. All of you know the importance of that project. We're ready to go with it, but somewhere we got to allocate three point two, three point three million. Obviously, I think that's the, that's the one place where you're going to have some money plugged into probably ARPA. Obviously, you could use one of these other places to plug three point three million, but that's probably the logical place it does. And of course, then that total will be ten-three minus, minus whatever we allocate for that and that's the ARPA money. That, that's why I'm saying this is kind of a worksheet we're going to be using, but that's an example of one project that kind of accelerated because, you know, he put it in, we got it. It's not absolutely a hundred percent when you talk to him. It's not absolutely, but it's real close because it met that important second step, right, Mayor? There's two, the first step was putting in was, okay, pretty good. The second step was the big one. And now, obviously, it can get cut, but if it doesn't get cut, they're going to be ready to give us two million dollars and we're going to need to come up with the other three to do it. So that's where that would be, be slotted. Some of the new material I gave you, and again, it's things to think about, some of you already have. For instance, the ARPA funding starting. I put in the packet, you know, the staff recommendation and they've been revised some. And I'm just going to talk about those a little bit. As you see, up number one in the ARPA is the Craig Park Seawall project. Obviously, it got moved up. And the rest of them aren't in any order really, but that one was kind of up to number one because that's the one we got to decide for where funding is. Next project, and it's, it's based on the audit we did and I know Tommy and Paul are here to talk about it either tonight or when it comes to the budget meetings, I'm sure you're going to want to talk to them about it. From our audit of security, a major hit with the cybersecurity for water, sewer and storm, whatever, that's something to talk about. The fire station, you see the estimate's gone up a little bit because of the cost that's happened. That's moved up. Remember, you don't need to finance it all. If you decide to use ARPA funds, you don't need to decide all of it. If you remember when we permanently leased or sold or whatever you, whatever we call the structure remained for the cell tower, we've got about eight hundred thousand set aside dedicated that's, was getting bad interest, maybe to get a little better interest now. But, so we'll have just under a million dollars that's already allocated from there. There also could be over a couple of years, depending on the timing you want to do for the fire station, some million dollar allocations you could do in the penny money. So just because you see six million from ARPA, that doesn't mean you have to finance the whole fire station project if you choose from ARPA. But you give it a good portion to, to make it move along faster, again, as you slot, slot the cost if you decided something. Originally, when we first did it, probably in two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, we kind of said, design somewhere in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four and build two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. And again, that was based probably four or five years ago, the last time we did that. The importance of it is where you want to slide it over the next five years. Is it a priority and when it's a priority to do? So again, that's a decision you'll have to make. On the new cops and kids center, I think that's probably of all of them, the best chance that we have to go after other grants for either federal or state grants. I think because it's a, it's a center that's going to incorporate its services to, to the underserved, not just the cops and kids, but to bring in those services to the community that people have to go to Clearwater now, go down county for, that it'll be a center to house services right there for people in need, especially in the community. I think that's a prime one where we might not have to allocate these funds and we can get those state or maybe federal grants to do. So, again, while obviously it's close to my heart, I do think that's going to be the highest of availability to go after other, other monies with. We have talked about the importance of additional portable line, the line replacements. We, presently, you'll hear, when you talk to Paul about it, that it's, it's a million dollar a year that he's kind of got slotted to go. If we wanted to accelerate that and replace more pipes, then that's where that allocation comes in to, to kind of double up and start moving those pipes and, and moving the timeline of changing those pipes up, up sooner. The septic, the sewer, Florida Avenue, phase one, we, if you remember, we had a big phase, a five million dollar phase. We decided to, to cut that down to be a little more reasonable, so, so the phase one came. If I can read across, it's a little like three million dollars. That's something that, that I believe, is that for two thousand twenty-six? So that's a, right now, dedicated two thousand twenty-six project. If the board was to think that it needed to be moved up because the importance of the, the septic close to waters for sustainability and other reasons, it's slotted in there, but it's not slotted to two thousand twenty-six, probably done twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Obviously, that can stay in the rotation to be done at that time. If this board thought it was important where we could use an ARPA money or another set of money to move that up, which again, when that moves up, the number two project, which would be the phase two, that would probably move up to two thousand twenty-six and we'd slot it along the lines. An addition you see is just a preliminary estimate. We're going to be going next, after we get done with the big dredging project, looking at the river and bayous dredging again. You could allocate some of ARPA money or again, you could slot it in the penny slots when you're doing the budget for coming up in the next few years. Couple of stormwater projects are in there. Again, the purpose of them would be to speed them up. I'm not sure when they're allotted, but to speed them up. We've got two smaller projects that'll probably be moved to Penny, probably recommend they be moved to Penny, but they could also be moved to ARPA. One was in there before, the theater upgrades and improvement. The new one is the Heritage Museum building improvements. We're in negotiation with Christopher Steele right now to do a very large Christopher Steele permanent display at the Heritage Museum, which I think would be a boom for that, for that building and the usage and getting people with. We talked about some major pieces including one, size of one of those panels are bigger on the wall displayed in there. Obviously, if he's going to bring his and some of his stuff that some other people who've bought his projects want to donate and to be displayed there, obviously, we need lighting, new carpeting, a new setup. So the new thing you see, which, which, again, I put it in the ARPA, but it's also something that I think that, that we could put in Penny and that's where I'd probably put it in Penny. Because that's pretty exciting, I think, for the usage and the bringing attention to the Heritage Museum. And you'll be hearing more as we talk to Christopher Steele a little more about it and stuff. But we're at a point now where we think it's going to happen and we need, we need money to make that display look right. And, and he is putting in some of his money also in some of these things to do that. So that's an addition that you'll see on there. The library improvement was important. Obviously, last commission meeting, you know, I had to send an email before July first that we were going to extend the grant to ask again for the state grant on libraries. This year, no library got a grant from the state. So I'm not thinking the chances are next year, if we apply for that grant, that we have a chance to get it next year. My recommendation is somehow, and again, this is just for the interior improvements. There's also, I talked to the mayor today about another phase that would go after the improvement, go wherever we want, but about some expansion of the library. But this is the interior that Kerry's been putting in grants for, for a couple of years. Yes, we can go for, we've already got five hundred thousand budgeted. We were going for the match from the, the state. Again, we didn't get it. If I apply again and I come due in, in July with the thing to extend it, I don't see a lot of hope of getting it then. So, obviously, in two years, we're going to do it, but that interior and the, the rooms and we'll have Kerry to talk to you a little more about that. I just, we tried for the grant. I think it's time and with the library and how many people in the community the library affects. That five hundred, that extra five hundred, we need that, we need the slot. And then we need to talk about what point in the years, years of the process and what we'll be looking at to see about the opportunity for maybe an expansion of that building because you know how much it's used. But this would get the first, this would get all the interior work we need to do done, ready to go and set while we talked about that. So, that's just my recommendation. Again, it's for our budget meetings and stuff to talk about which way the board wants to go on that. And then we talked about at the end, the two extensions for the, the chiller and maybe for the sewer projects, we might need extra money from. Again, that money can come from ARPA money or you can slot that extra we need. You could slot that in the Penny for Pinellas money and we could, we could do that there. You got a lot of options. I also attached some, the items that have come in that, that you've all seen. One is the request from the hospital for ARPA money and I think the, the main priority we're talking about is number two, about the extension of awning for patient coverage. You know, I agree with Jason Dunkle. If a pandemic or another emergency happens again, that is probably the biggest need to have that awning because a lot of, if you remember during COVID, they had to stage people outside. So an awning all the way around with those people staging outside or undercover is their highest priority. And I would think of that's one point one million, but again, we're consider ARPA, then that's a consideration. We also have some recommendations from the Sustainability Committee. Again, these can be either ARPA. The tree inventory, or in tree inventory, number four, we just got a big grant for, so, so that's covered. But that's just some of their ideas to, to consider as we go along. And I'm sure we may have some more come in, but, but this is the sheet right now of, of things we, we have to consider that I included in your backup. I also gave you a sheet in not any order, some, not to do with ARPA, but anywhere in the budget. I gave you some citizen initiatives we know about so far. One is the Union Academy Museum and, and again, that wasn't sent out in my son named ass emailing because I tried, I had to get Kevin to try to find some of the paperwork on it. That's about an African-American history museum of five hundred thousand at that property we gained when we tore down the building at five, five hundred Oakwood Street. The Greek Town Vision Plan, which the mayor talked about a little bit. And of course, as we've seen from our last meetings, and we got some for the twelfth. If, if, if we're going to begin the process of pickleball courts. That's something for consideration when we're, when we're doing all of our, our slotting. I gave you a brief sheet of, of some of the potential property purchases that we may need to fund somewhere in these, in, in the budgeting processes. I pretty much have an idea on the first two. The Ross property in Kokoras, again, this is potential. We still have to negotiate deals and the commission has to decide they want to move forward with them. If you remember, the Ross property is the great stormwater and land preservation to keep an area of stormwater from being maybe a couple of homes or something like that. And the Corus Park, the unknowns, which are some big ticket items, these are big ticket money items. Why, I don't even want to speculate on them. Obviously, the Stamis property for, for, you know, to have a permanent place for the dredging and the, the Stoffler property. Those are unknowns and, and it's unknown when we need to slot them in. But again, it's something for you to keep in mind as we're deciding during the budget process where we're going to, where we're going to put these items. I also included preliminary things of where if I was, these are not recommendations for positions, but if I was asked from the position list, if you remember, we did, had all departments put in positions last year. If you were to ask me and the commission decided they want to fund some of these positions, these are probably what I would say a city manager are, are the essential positions. Police officers, the reason I put them in is I really think the fire is in need too. But I really think the fire has a good chance either this October or next October to meet the numbers criteria where the county will finance three new paramet. We are real close, very close. So obviously, they put in for funds last year too, but I really see a potential of us getting those. That's why the police officer is not in there because I used to be chief and I liked them more than fire. It's, it's that I think we're real close to getting with the counties, a lot of the county's dime, three of those firefighters and maybe even as soon as October, depending on the numbers. We may be a little off, but I think by next year, we should have that to be, so that's why those were in there. The one civilian position is just one that Jeff is begging me for and it has a lot to do with the, which we predicted with the cameras and the videos and redacting and you're taking officers' time and stuff off the road and it's, it's almost begin, what you have to do before you, it's not as easy as you want a video, put it in. They got the, there's the whole process, Jeff, I'm sure will talk to you about. So the civilian position wasn't in here, it wasn't on my list that I was working on five days ago, but and it's not something, it may be something next year, but eventually, we're going to have to stop pulling officers to do this and have somebody dedicated to that down the line. So that's the rationale why, and obviously, the police officers, all they're doing, if, if you just think about Officer Boone and what he does, if he had a couple more officers where he could dedicate another Officer Boone, just think what that could do with the problems and the stuff he calls you get every day in the community. Those officers that go out and problem solve, that would allow him, the officers to stay on the road and officers to problem solve like an officer, Officer Boone. The second area, of course, of great need if we want to do is, is in public works. And the two biggest needs, I'm old school and probably the city manager only, the, the mayor only knows from the city manager day is what I'm talking about, but the two parks positioned are more of a blitz crew. We used to call them back in the day a blitz crew. These were your troubleshooters who went out with whatever problems you had in the community that come up and they would be there to take care of it. They'd also be there, like that time at the cemetery when we had our two workers both go down in busy growing season. You could pull them right away and make up the deficiencies instead of having the overgrown situation. You'd have two people to pull and send there. We've been trying to hit off probably for four months, pick areas and neighborhoods where we'd pay particular attention and go street by street and look for problems, overgrown grass in the sidewalk, different things. We identified those two neighborhoods as Greek Town and the Union Academy neighborhood. We have not been able to put a crew together because of our workload, people out again, openings. We have not even been able to start that project. We talked about four months ago and start going street by street. We just haven't had the personnel. We've been trying to keep up. So, if there's any need and a need that the citizens would see, it'd probably be there. And of course, that, that second, that third position, which is, is the amount of signage and street striping. and street striping and crosswalks and stuff that needs to be done, have to be done with the future, to get all those things done in a timely manner. Poor one sign guy, we, we work him to death and we still can't keep up. So, so to move those things like crosswalks, intersection, striping, signage and all that stuff further, that's a real need somewhere down the road. If not this year, it's probably gonna be next year. And then the last position, and it relates to a lot of what people were talking about last year. We talked about the grant writer, but we need more, if we're gonna do that position, we need more of a grant writer and a grant project coordinator. We need somebody, right now, we're just overextended as you see all the projects that we've got going on. It's nice to go out and get a lot of grants. It's nice to go get a lot of money coming in for them. You've gotta administrate the, the work being done. And when you have some disaster projects like over here on Gross and we're trying to avoid being more disaster Seabreeze, when you have two of those and then you've got all of these projects to manage, it's tough. So the more grants, we also need somebody for those grants and we get them to help with the process of project administration. That's why you see the cost a little higher on that. And again, you see the costs. They're not recommendations for me. They're just if you ask me the priorities from the list you had done, well, not you because some of you weren't on when last year the mayor was and, and Commissioner Carr was about, everybody put in what, and yet a long list of positions from a lot of departments. If you ask me this year and you choose to take some of the money that you've got in, for instance, the general fund money, the 638,000, if you decide to put some of that towards positions, those in those certain order based on the importance of this board, those would be the positions that I would say you would have to, to look at.
Are those lower cost smart?
Those are everything. Benefits, salary benefits, that's the, that's the total cost of, of everything, not just the salary cost.
He got more.
Think I went over most. Again, these are all, all important items, a lot of important projects. Somewhere in the main, when, when you get started, the 19th, and we move forward with this budget process, where are we gonna start? What projects can we start on and what order and how are we gonna look forward in the next two or three years to do these? Obviously, you have to have a starting point and that's gonna be the hard decisions that, again, we can bring, we talk about the procedures and number three, you know, how we wanna bring the departments in the budget, what you wanna talk about, what more information do you have so you can make the decisions and where this board collectively in their mind are gonna slot these needs, what they see important to slot, what they don't slot and where, and what funding sources do we have, are they gonna put those in? I know it's a lot, that, that's one of the important reasons we thought we need to have that meeting because we didn't wanna throw all of this on you the 19th, wanted to give a couple of weeks of, of looking at, at what you have set in front of you. And again, it's not only for this year. It almost equated with a lightning, talking about their trade of McDonough and it wasn't just for this year, it's for next year and the year after. Again, this board is gonna have the chance when we have, the reliable, have four of the five commissioners here on board next April. That board has two years because there's no election in between. So this board not only is gonna set the starting, but the majority of this board is gonna set those next two years and have these all put into place. So that's why it's important to look at three years and even maybe up to five. And this board is gonna have a very important place because you're gonna dictate the history of, of, of what gets done. And believe me, the town, when we start working on the sponge docks drainage, start working very soon on the light on 19, when we finished our mirrors portion, we do the Craig Park seawall there, this board is gonna see construction all over this town of improvements they're gonna see. So that's why this budget and the upcoming ones are a little different than some of the other years and very important to go forward with. And I tried to give you as many things, I'm sure there'll be more. I don't have commission initiatives on, I'm sure there may be some of your initiatives you want for the budget, they're gonna be talked about in the future, that'll be added to these different phases and stuff. So basically, I wanted to give you overview and questions of, of, you know, what the chore is the 19th and the 28th to move forward to.
Can you just give about 30 seconds about the unfunded capital projects that you've got in the backup? It's the staff requested but unfunded.
Oh, yes.
Just the philosophy behind that.
Yes, those, tho, 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 those are, those are real important. That's one thing I didn't include in the backup, I probably should, I included in what I sent to you. Obviously, the, the departments sent us items for this upcoming budget. Those are items that didn't make the cutting block of the original budget. So those need to be looked at also. You may wanna talk to the different departments when we come to those two budget meetings. A lot of them are very important to the, to the departments, but again, we, we wanted to especially this year leave this board a lot of latitude as funds. Sometimes we bring you a budget and there's maybe 100,000, 200,000 to consider because we've already slid some things in. So we wanted to give some, the maximum ability to yours to look over those things and your consideration, in your consideration of all the other things we talked about, some departments are very passionate that they need these, these things, they like them this year, maybe we think about sliding them in, in Penny's monies for next year. But those are things you may hear about when you talk to department heads. I know one of the things in past years you've asked, what are, what did you get cut out of the budget that you really think you need? Those are some of the things they'll bring you, not all of them. Obviously, some of them, they probably put in knowing they were gonna get cut and they're ways away, but there's some of them in there that are important. And so those, those are considerations too when we ask of, of, you know, vehicles or whatever they put in, that is something you may wanna discuss with departments and something you may wanna allocate for the different positions on your worksheet.
Vice Mayor Lunt, do you like any comments or questions?
I think I'm getting a good general idea on, probably have more firmer questions on some of the capital improvement projects we're, we're getting into. And you know, balancing them against what I'm hearing from the citizens as priorities, don't always jive with some of this stuff. I need more time to go through this in detail.
That's fine. Okay. Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just for the rest of the board, this is a significant amount of information. So obviously, talk, I would recommend talking to Mark multiple times and talking to this different staff members multiple times because there's, it is a lot to take in, this is a lot of information. I mean, being on here almost, this is my sixth time, it's still a lot of information, but I understand a lot of different things that are going on. So ask as many questions as you can, question Mark on it, question staff on it with Mark's permission to speak with them, of course. So one thing real quick, Mark, I want a couple of questions for you. When you have potential property purchases, can that be done by Penny Fund for properties?
Yes.
Okay. One of the things that the, Mark and Ron has done pretty creative with is looking at intercompany loan or interfund loans. And that's an op, an opportunity to borrow money from other funds that have more money set aside for capital projects in the future. So ultimately, you could maybe buy something and you use that loan and you transfer it and you pay it off the next year. So it gives you the opportunity to use some other flexibility with some funds too. So that could be something where we could look at some of these property purchases. So it's not just all Penny this year. So you could use partial Penny this year and partial Penny next year and have that payback to the other fund. So there's definitely some creative things to do across this, across this budget year. I mentioned already, there, I do believe there's some importance. We have struggled as a city with public works as some of the beautification aspects are just keeping up the facade of the city. When I say facade, it's not like the city hall facade, but like our sidewalks that need to be pressure washed, different things along those lines that Mark talked about in some of the neighborhoods. I do believe that's important. I would fully support any police additions that we can do and I do support also some fire additions. I mean, if Mark feels that there's a, a grant opportunity, I'm happy to defer to him on that, but I'd like to talk to, to the chief a little bit further. A couple of things I just wanna point out too during the ARPA funding, recommendation by staff, the priority line, there's a couple of on there that I believe that the state, looking at the state budget over the past few years, there's been a lot of budgets that have included septic to sewer transitions. So I know there's already one in there that we're doing with the ARPA fund in Bay Shore, but I would suggest that this coming year, we, we target something along those lines from the state. There's plenty of state money to be there. Not sure who our representative's gonna be this coming fiscal year with Sprouls terming out, but I think there's still an opportunity to get state funding and we really should, should be pushing hard for that to help mitigate some of these other projects that we wanna do and move those up further. The ARPA funds, I do wanna put a heavier emphasis on the additional portable water lines. I do appreciate the opportunity that there's a million dollars already in the capital budget, but I do think it's important to push those as well too. And also, when we talked about the cybersecurity for water, sewer and stormwater infrastructure, it's an important aspect, but surely there's some type of fund that's built in to our current rates as well too, that there's some earmark or some type, something that's done already in our funding with the expectation to do something with that. So I would like to see a balance between those two. I do believe the hospital's an important one to address though, as well. But there's plenty of things on here. The parking garage in downtown wasn't really discussed within the CRA or the Penny Fund and parking and the sponge docks also is another area we could look a bit further into. But I do think that's an important thing we need to look at from the Penny Fund and the CRA, looking out into the future. It may not be building it, breaking ground in 2023, but setting funds aside is an important thing because we need to plan for the future and what that looks like. We don't wanna be caught with a $3 million parking garage and then trying to figure out how to fund it and then you have another three, five years of trying to fund it. So it is important that something that's been discussed for six, seven, eight years now, but we really haven't gained the steam that we need to for that funding aspect. We talked about the project and grants that Mark brought up too. Again, I mean, I'm for a reduction in the millage rate, but I do see and understand the, the need to pull back, I'm sorry, to increase some of our staff in some of our areas because obviously, there's been complaints for many years now about not having enough staff to do certain projects. So I understand that, but I do think it's a good balance to try to figure out a millage rate and also be able to add staff to the, to the city. And with that, I'm looking forward to meeting with you more, Mark, to discuss further about it and staff and, and Ron as well too. Thank you for the presentation.
Commissioner Hysner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious if there was any outstanding projects that we have that have either been cost overruns or have been not finished that we have to look at that we might not have in here from existing?
Right now, I believe we have both, most of those funded in there. That's why you only see at the end of the Penny, like about four, where Ron says he likes 250,000 and we have like 14,000. Now, obviously, we're not gonna spend all those that year, so it's not gonna be at the bottom. We've incorporated some of that into there. So right now, I think they're covered, but we're learning project by project when we get to the next first or the second, but we may have some updated information on that for you. Or right, we may have right up to then the budget time that information for you.
Well, I ask that because of course, we can be very happy spending this, but I wanna make sure that we're conservative enough to have everything covered that's already existing out there. Because you, you always get a, a curve ball thrown at you. This also covers like existing projects like the bridge and things like that, or that has to come about?
No, that's, that's in about the line we have to do for the bridge, that's, that's in there.
Because I know that's a major, another major project.
Yes.
The Borenberg.
Yes. The line we have to.
So, okay, I, I have an idea. Now, just to give me an idea, because I've not done this before, are we supposed to be putting arbitrary figures in along this or is that coming at a different date? What should we be doing from here on?
Again, I think obviously, this was to give you all this information, to give you two more weeks to prepare before our first official meeting. Whether you use it as a worksheet of your ideas or where you'd slot some things, it just give you an idea, it's something we haven't given the board for, here's the money that's available and stuff for you to kinda look at, just mainly to make notes so when you come together and have to make collective decisions, everybody's, however they wanna do their, people do budgeting a lot different or deciding things. So it would just be to have in your mind the important things where you think they should be funded, then when we all come together and actually decide where to put them, you just have a little basis to do with it. Again, you make your own cheat sheet, I just made the cheat sheet I'm gonna use, but to show you about how with funds and stuff and how when you give me projects as a board, you know, you give me five projects and where to fund them, then I put them in here where they belong, subtract it and now the board has this much money in the budget to, to do with, so.
Let me, let me ask it this way. So one commissioner has a $12,000 project or a $10,000 project, none of the other commissioners wanna get involved in that. How is that distributed? Do we take a vote on it? That's, this is the question I'm asking. If somebody has 2,000, I'm just throwing numbers out here, $2,000 is put in by me and 3,000 by vice mayor and 2,000 by that person, do we average it out? How do we decide, you know, how, how that, how that money gets allotted is my question.
I, I think you would decide, how it's been done in the past, like I say, the one sheet I don't have is a sheet of commission initiated, your ideas. I don't, I don't have that yet because I haven't talked to any of you about that. I imagine you would come at them and then collectively, you would decide if you're gonna vote majority rule to do them if, because there'll be, there'll be hopefully additional monies that'll come forward in the budget process besides these. Say you collectively have 100,000 worth of projects between you, you may wanna do all those or you, you could decide to divide it up in 20,000, five commissioners, that would be something the board would decide how they're gonna, we, they've done it both ways, they've, okay.
Okay. So there would be something like a matrix that we would do? Okay. Thank you. I got it now.
I'm assuming I can get all this in spreadsheet format, right? Good. Commissioner Cuyas, spreadsheets work better than.
I don't have many questions as I am soaking all this in and I will have questions and emails from Mark. I would just have this board to please consider maybe opening up one more position for the Tarpon Housing Authority to help, give them some help or maybe some grant writing or, helping them with their issues that they have, so.
The housing authority.
That would be, yeah, I've, I've got, that would be when I start, I didn't start the list of, of commission generated project list, but I've got his, that was one thing, to help us fund the position for them. That would, that would be, they're not obviously our employees, but it'd be almost like we did for the depot. We, we, we do, we do an allotment of money that we would do towards them to go towards that, similar, we do it to the depot now for an employee at the depot. So it'd be a similar situation. I do have his memo. I might have one from one, but, but I didn't make the list yet of, of projects and stuff, but that's, we do, it'd be allotment of, you know, whatever the, we dedicate 20,000 towards them for a position for public, it may be something you use under the need for affordable housing and public housing where you use the money to set aside for them to help get grants for properties, but home buying, whatever we need for, as you, one of the major problems we have in this town is, is affordability of housing. So that may be a position you would allocate money for.
Okay. I have another question.
No.
Are you done, Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Okay.
Somewhere in here, I saw that we had allocated 300 dollars in the, 300,000 in the budget for sidewalk improvements and that the typical is 100,000 dollars from the sidewalk fund. How did that happen?
Wanna talk, who was our side one? I think we're kinda, remember, we got that money, if, if you remember, we got that matching money that we could use from the, what do we call that fund? The extra money that we got that we got.
It was reserved sidewalk fund, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So, so there's a fund that we had that we, we had to keep a, we had to keep a maximum, we had to keep 2 million in it or something. And we did.
You mean the sidewalk improvement fund?
Yes. Sidewalk Improvement Fund. So that gave us the ability up to 100,000, how much we spend.
Per charter, Mark.
To match it, per charter, to match it with another 100,000 from there, from, from that fund.
Okay. Match it against what fund?
What we budget.
Oh, so we can budget from the general fund, we can match.
And then we get the match from that sidewalk fund. It used to be you kept 2 million there no matter what, but under the charter, the last charter time, they allowed us to up to 100,000 a year to match what we budgeted, they would match. If we budgeted 50, they'd match 50. We, we've consistently done 100. So that's another, the other 100 in there might be another project or something. Trying to remember where the other, but we'll have that for you for the 19th and stuff.
The comment is we're not doing enough for sidewalks. We're just not. This $100,000 a year, I don't know where the restriction came from, but it's not enough. We need to do whatever we can to, to make sure that that, as well as putting some priority, I'm assuming stormwater in here is referring to stormwater or is it referring to flooding? Because nowhere in here am I seeing flooding being addressed. I see stormwater.
Yeah, a lot of the stormwater addresses your flooding problems.
Rising tide.
So that's, that's a major concern of mine.
So we, we've got the existed funding projects. For example, the North Pinellas Avenue, I didn't think that was quite funded yet because we didn't know what we wanted or?
Right.
So we, that's a high priority.
Right. Yeah. And hopefully, our answer is coming. Hopefully, it's really coming soon about what we're allowed to do.
Right. So to Commissioner Eisner's point, there are a couple of out there that are not funded, but they're, you know, that's been around for four years. We've talked about it. That's something that.
Do we have the North Pinellas? Do we have any in there for, did we put any placeholder in there? Do you remember or we have to go back and look, Ron?
I thought historically there was money there, was put in there historically.
I'm not sure I'm familiar with that, North Pinellas?
Yeah, the North Pinellas Corridor.
Orange Street to Live Oak or Dodikinese is beautification improvements.
Which one is it?
Bob, you want to?
Bob Roberts, you might know.
Orange Street to Dodikinese.
We got the Orange Street construction. Is that what she's talking?
No, this is different.
Oh, okay. I guess I'm not.
You got a lot. I'm only the money guy. Do we have anything funded for that, Bob, that you know of right now, or?
Not that I know of, no.
Yeah, there's.
Well, we were waiting to see what we were going to do. I thought we might have put a placeholder, but I guess we didn't.
No, I was fairly sure because I've been watching that. Anyway.
I think I wanted to put a placeholder, maybe I didn't get it in there.
And it might be worth having the staff go through those and see.
Yeah, we will. We'll have that by the 19th.
Also, in terms of getting to Commissioner Eisner's comment about how to approach this, if you see something that is of interest to you that you don't see in the, in the budget anywhere, anything, anything that you see in front of you, I, I think it would be good to discuss that with the city manager first before we start putting numbers by it and everything like that. Just, he may have some history on it that, yeah, we, you know, this is something that's being done here or there, or we've got plans to do this. That's all. So the other part of this is I tried to get, we've got these priorities that are emerging out of our strategic plan. That's what its purpose is. So I, I would like for us to keep those in mind as we, as we develop this project. And also, there's, when the city manager talked about programming, I think we've got, we're like in the ARPA projects alone, I think we're 16 million dollars short, but those are still things that need to be done and they could be programmed into the out years. That's, that's what I've been trying to do so that, for example, I'm going to use Chief Young as, as a kind of an example. If he's got something that he wants, something major that's going to be 3 million dollars that he sees emerging, that he can put that in and say, okay, well, we've got all these other priorities, let's plan on doing that in, in 2028 or something like that. So you just put an expectation date of 2028 and then you just kind of move towards that target while you're trying to knock out these other 16 million dollars. You include that. So that's, that's how I envision, that's the one thing we don't have. We didn't have priorities and we didn't have programming. The priorities, I hope, will shuffle out to what gets done first and then the things that aren't getting done first, certainly they're important enough not to forget, so let's assign a date. The one thing that I think is important is the new fire station for a couple of reasons. One is the vulnerability of the old one. We keep kicking that can down the, the path and kind of like the city clerk's office, that one's gotten a little expensive and this thing is, every year, it's getting more and more expensive, the firehouse, the new fire station out on Gulf Road. So at some point, we've got to make a decision on that and just start on it or, and I'm not, I'm not advertising for it in the sense, but I think it's an important project and certainly the longer we delay on some of these things, the more expensive they're going to get, that's all. The other thing, too, I think City Manager LaCorse mentioned, some of these things may be a higher priority, but they're, they also may be very conducive to obtaining a grant. And hopefully, we can get that grant writer on board and help with that, but there may be some other things that are important, but not as important, but may not be as conducive for grant. And maybe we should fund those knowing that we have a higher chance, a much higher chance. And don't ask me what that break even point is, I don't know, but it's a complicated sort of process that we need to kind of go through and there's a lot. And, and I think a little bit, City Manager LaCorse is going to kind of get it to the point of how do we approach this for this commission as compared to the way the other commission did. And I think a decision has got to be made tonight on that. So I, I think, as I mentioned on this ARPA thing, that some things aren't on there, but they're on the memoriam that we got and they're self-explanatory. There may be a couple of others that pop up, too. I, I do know that there's, for example, the pickleball, bocce, shuffleboard courts. They're important. We've got some deficiencies in the comp plan. I know that the city manager's got a, a kind of a location that seems to have been the assumed location, but there's some other aspects from the location that if we get to that point, talk about these, I'll, I'll talk about it at that time. So it's another variable in all of this is if we want to build something and we've got an idea of where it ought to be built, we want to make sure that that is the location of where we want to build it, not just, it's assumed that that's where we're going to build it. So we can get that into that a little later on. But for me, this is, it's, it's a lot of work, but it's exciting. So I, I don't know if you had anything planned for the department heads, if whether they...
I just had them here just in case something came up.
Does any, I should ask. Does anybody have a question for any of the department heads? Okay.
Well, I have a question for IT, but I don't see them here, so.
Chief who? Chief?
I said IT.
I said IT.
Oh, IT, okay.
About this 2 million dollars for?
Mr. Keiger is here also, who knows a lot about all the, that's one of the reasons he was there, prepared in case somebody asked about that one. So I anticipated.
I was, I was under the impression that our SCADA system was in pretty good shape and, and pretty well taken care of from a security point of view, and I'm kind of surprised at a $2 million price tag. What's that intended for?
Yes. Operationally, this SCADA system's in very good shape. You know, obviously, as there are some components that are coming up for end of life replacements and things like that. What this is really about is, obviously, we're all aware of what happened with Oldsmar last year. They had a cybersecurity intrusion in their water facility and after that, we request, or, I'm sorry, a little tall. We had our consultants hire a national cybersecurity firm to do a cybersecurity audit and they created a list of action items for us to take care of. And one of those was to implement a multi-layered cybersecurity approach. And this would basically be updating the network architecture and things like that. So all the individual components work very well operationally right now, but the main takeaway was that the threat environment facing utilities has dramatically changed the last few years and that we basically need to bring our, our existing system up to the modern standards. And additionally, there's been some guidance put out by the federal government recommending network architecture changes and things of that nature for all utilities that have, you know, online SCADA or network.
When was that audit done?
That was completed in November of last year.
Can we send copies of that to all the commissioners?
Can I get a copy of that, or?
We'll send it to all of you.
I'll have to double check with Suzanne on that. We're very, you know, Suzanne, our IT director, is, can be a little bit tight with that, but we can, we'll find a way to make that available for y'all to review, but because it's, you know, about our critical infrastructure, obviously, we have to be secure with that document.
Okay. Paul, you're standing there. Did you want to say anything?
Well, I just wanted to make sure you all know this is Tommy Keiger. He's our wastewater, or now he's our Assistant Public Services Director, former wastewater division manager.
One of his new positions from this past year, right?
Thank you. You're next, you want to go to the next, next one? I don't know, is there any other question?
Anything else for any?
No.
And again, get with me in the next two weeks, we can, well, we're going to talk about, the next item is preparing for what we're going to, what our setup is going to be the 19th or so. So I think, I think it's now to get into, again, I've seen, been through many different commissions and many different ways they want to do the budget workshops. So the idea to get from you is what procedures, how you want to operate it. One suggestion, a more conducive, a lot of times to do these, we use the second floor conference room. Obviously, we did this one in here. So we're going to be, need to talk about location, structure, how we want to structure the meetings. Obviously, we usually have, what we've done the past two years when we've gone to the second or third meeting, many years we did it in one night. Obviously, we've got a lot of things here, so it's probably not going to be one night, but how you want to set it up, set up the appearances of the department heads, if you want to go over the main items in one meeting. So I think we just need to round table with the mayor and, and mayor and come up with a, you know, what are we looking at as far as setting and, and what the agenda is going to be of how we go. If we're going to go department by department, are we going to go by the departments that commissioners have questions on and divide them up over two nights? So just mainly around is what the expectations this board and what they want me and, and the department heads to bring you as you go through these workshops to get the information you need to formulate and finalize in the next couple of months, this budget.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
I, I think in the past, there's been, the easiest way to describe it going line by line, and I particularly think that that's not a very efficient way of doing it. And the other part of it is that in those instances, when that's happened, we seldom ever finish. We get to some point where we just kind of, you know, we're just kind of laid back going line by line and then we realize that we're out of time and then everything else is rushed and sometimes we miss the more, some, some important things, too. So I, I think that, I guess, and I, I want to hear from the other commissioners, but I, I think the idea would be to kind of, as I had said earlier, take a look at each department as far as how things are trending in terms of the increase. There's going to be some things that are going to stick out like a sore thumb, like a 40% increase or a 20% decrease. And it's not real clear as far as what that's about, but, you know, you, we would need some clarification on that. There may be some other things that, as, as, as you all mentioned earlier, that are not being seen in that department and that would be fair game to ask that as well, but, you know, I would ask the city manager that ahead of time and maybe prepare the department head for that meeting so we can just get that out of the way. So let, let me go to questions about that process and I'll go down the line. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you, do you have any idea of preference or, I mean, you've done budgeting before, just from a higher level or go line by line?
Done both, actually.
Okay.
I'm, you know, I, I will probably go through it line by line, but I probably won't address more than a handful of sub-things on a line by line basis, just the ones that are called.
No, go through it line by line privately is what I'm getting at. But I mean, coming here, not to, there's been instances in the meetings where we've gone line by line in the meetings and it's like.
Oh, come on.
No, no, seriously. He can, he can tell you. So anyway, so I think maybe you'll become prepared to speak specific items that you see might.
Exactly.
Let me go, Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, I support that, Mayor, 100%. I was part of those meetings and too long.
Right. Commissioner Eisner.
My question is, how does the budget advisory tie in? Don't they go through line by line and give us the recommendations that they give us?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, so I, I just don't see the need to go on a line by line item, you know, per se. It's, it's just, it's, it's labor intensive, it's micromanaging.
Right.
It's, it's just, it's all things that can only cause those problems, especially, because then you have to delve into every single question on, on what they're doing with their pencil sharpener. I mean, it's ridiculous, so, no. I'll look at it on my own time and I prefer to deal with it as, as a whole. But I'm just curious how, when do we get the budget advisory recommendation? When does that tie in? Do we get like a book or, or something from what their?
What did they recommend?
Maybe, maybe, Ron, you've already gone through that process.
Beginning, and they, they are in the process of voting last time to have a recommendation. Usually, usually they're brought up at one of the budget, at one of the budget workshops they come. Usually the first one, I think a lot, it was last year, the first budget workshop when you were ousted. But again, it's, it's, it's the different, it's different boards have done it a different way. They've done it at the beginning of the process, they've done at the end to ask for the recommendation. They've already composed some that they had from the last meeting. We have another meeting in between your two budget meetings where anything new that comes up, they'll do. So he'll be ready to, anytime to give you what recommendations they've got so far. I'm either that first session or the second session when you want to hear them, almost like a department head, you'd hear theirs also, so that would be your decision.
Do they, do you have any? Do you have recommendations now?
That was my, thank you.
If, if you'd like, but if you could come to the microphone.
I don't go too long.
We like you.
Thank you.
Just to give you a quick overview, and I appreciate what you're saying, Mayor, because I look at, there's a lot of decisions that you have to make at a, at a higher level, but I want you to rest assured that in the, we spent three two-hour sessions getting down into that nitty gritty, dirty detail, line by line. Mark was there and Ron, Ron was also there, and we did fire out all the questions on the line by line that we could see, you know, things that stood out. So, and there, it should be incorporated in, in the numbers that they, the commission now sees. So that nitty gritty, because I just listened to it. The board has a lot of higher level decisions to make, coming up with, and this is kind of good decisions. We have money. What do we do with it now? So I'd like you to kind of rest assured that all, all departments came in, presented it, and anything that was jumping out, you know, has been, we've questioned it. So I just, with all the decisions that you have to make, the important ones.
So you're, that's what I was getting at. That process has been completed. Is that right with the entire project, entire budget?
We got one more meeting, the 20th or? We got one more meeting between your two budget sessions.
I just wanted to add one thing. The Budget Advisory Committee put together two or three, and it's being typed up as we speak right now, recommendations at a fairly high level for the board to consider, just consider, we know, you know, you're the final decision makers, but as you're looking at the budget numbers, to consider these three factors and that should be in your hands when.
You'll get it before the first budget, before your first budget.
You'll have them probably in the next two days.
Okay.
But so all that nitty gritty, grind it out, I got to say, you're, you have so, so much decisions to make, how to spend this money.
No.
Probably more.
Just a question of the process, the way the process, the way it worked in the meetings that you're describing, the staff. The staff and you had a dialogue, uh, going back and forth, and then at some, it was decided on which way to go at that particular moment.
Correct.
And so that should be reflected in the budget that-
That should be reflected in the numbers.
In the numbers that we have to see.
That you see.
Okay.
You know, in other words, we did-
You'll see in that book that he's, the final, he's gonna give you-
The lower level, grind it out stuff.
Okay.
And there's so much to do right now. Um, so I think your time-
Okay.
It's big, what you have to do.
Commissioner Eisner, you still had the floor.
Well, I'm glad he's bringing this up because I, I just don't want to do double work. If, uh, I would like to see what they're recommending, and then we decide on what the discretionary money is, um, and not go in line by line. And this could be a, I don't want to say the evil word, but this could be a smooth process, just as well as make it maybe very, uh, tough on us. So I'd like to take the easier route and as long, I mean, I watched their budget, you know, uh, meetings. I didn't really see anything that came up that was an alarm. So I, I don't want to redo the chess game. They, they did that, so that's my take on it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I'd say that Mark and Ron were all, it was an open dialogue what we go through. You don't want to go into the grind it out ugly stuff.
We're, even though I like the city manager and Mr. Herring, I'm glad there's another set of eyes on it.
It's always good. They're great to work with. Thank you.
Could I interject something that might help? I know, I think budget advisory liked it. We put together a sheet that showed each department, how much it increased and the percentage, and we had a brief explanations next to it. So I don't know if that might help, just for each department with a brief explanation.
We need to send, we need to send that to the board, so that, we'd appreciate that as well, Ron.
Well, we saw that already.
Yeah, we have that, but the, the brief explanation and a couple of them probably could be a little more detail on it.
We will go into more detail. It might have changed a little bit since, since this original one here, but-
Yeah, it did change some, yes.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Cuyas.
I, I look forward to working with everybody, and I agree with everyone on the board about how to go about the budget process this year.
Okay. That's all I had as far as the, uh, the process. I think we're gonna take a higher level, um, take the important, not the important, but the, the most numerous things first. And then, um, that'll help you set it up for the next meeting. The location, um, you wanted to talk about that a second, the location?
Is there, yeah.
I have it here.
The location.
Like where we're gonna meet at?
Well, in terms of, I mean, this is great, but in terms of having some kind of a dialogue among the commissioners and things, it might be better up in the, uh, uh, the corner room, up at the, uh, um, at the, um, what's it called? The conference room up there in the corner. This would be okay. I don't have an issue if, if, if you're comfortable with this.
I feel more comfortable here.
Here, okay.
Doesn't matter to me.
All right. All right, um, so we've got the, the approach and the location. Is there anything else as far as that lies?
I know, and I anticipated an hour and a half for the meeting, so it's, I'm pretty close.
Take it that.
Well, I didn't put it on, I forgot to put it on there and stuff, but-
You'd make these a little later then?
Well, well, it wasn't a prediction I was comfortable with we were gonna make. I was thinking we may be more two-hour mark, but yeah, and we've kept to the, we've kept to what I thought would be the appropriate time and schedule.
Yeah.
Plus, you go too long with a budget, your head starts going.
There may be some things that are evolving that it would be good for you just to give the city manager a call ahead of time before the July eighteenth, uh, meetings. As far as, um, um, some of the things here in this budget. He and I, um, talked about a couple of things, but, um, it, it's probably better for you to, um, I'm not sure how to describe it. Personnel things are, uh, for me are gonna be, um, my, my focus this month, just so you know, is gonna be retention. Police, fire, um, we've got some, still some challenges in hiring people. And, and the hiring process is taking a lot longer than, than we've experienced in the past, and a lot more challenging to get qualified people. And, um, you know, ultimately, if, um, um, the quality of services are gonna, is gonna be affected as well. So just, just keep that in mind when we go forward. And, and then the other thing too is at some point, from a policy perspective, um, things go up and they go down. When I was city manager, we didn't use any consultants at all. Those, consultants was a dirty name. Now we use consultants. Life has gotten more complicated, more details, more competitive, and so we have to use specialized consultants. And so, um, when you see some of these things that are coming forward, um, our staff may or may not be able to, um, they're, they're journeymen, but they're not specialists. They're good at what they do, but they're not specialists. So we may need some help, and I would hope the staff is, um, not shy about asking for that help if they need it. So that, that's all I was getting at with the, um, talking to the city manager about it. Thank you. That's all I got.
That's all I got.
Ready to adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay, adjourn at eight thirty-one.